And we're live, so whenever you're ready, Dave.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting of the Rochester City Planning Commission. Due to the continual high infection rates associated with coronavirus pandemic emergency and is authorized by the New York State Senate Bill five zero 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 one, which was signed into law by the governor September second, two thousand twenty-one. This public hearing will be conducted via video conference. In addition, at a prior meeting, we amended the planning commission rules and procedures to allow us to conduct this hearing as authorized by the Senate bill and to waive other requirements to allow us to proceed with this hearing, as I will now describe. Primarily, these waivers are involved with the requirements for in-person attendance to the hearing. The Senate bill permits us to hold this hearing by teleconference with no in-person attendance. Allow participant presentations, public testimony by teleconference. Written public comments, both in favor of or opposed to the application, to be submitted by email, mail, and/or hand-delivered to the zoning office at City Hall. The deadline to submit written comments was five P M. Friday, October, I'm sorry, November tenth, two thousand twenty-one, and the deadline to register for a spoken comment was twelve noon today, Monday, November, I'm sorry, December thirteenth. Although the conduct this hearing has been altered from some of our normal procedures, many remain the same. All the normal notifications of this hearing, including mail notice, publication, and posting of the notice were followed. A staff report has been prepared for each application, and the report, along with the application and other pertinent documents, have been presented to the commission members and are posted online several days prior to tonight's meeting. All the normal timeframes for applicant presentations, public comments in favor of or opposed to the application, and the applicant's rebuttal remain the same. Most importantly, the commission will hear, review, and make decisions about all the applications with the same diligence and using the same standards as required by the zoning code. Before I begin, I will explain the ground rules for the hearing. When a case is called, the applicant will be allowed fifteen minutes to present their case to the commission. The applications were all posted on the city's website at least one week ago and are available for public to review. All applicants were advised to ensure that their applications were complete and include all the information that they intend to present at this hearing tonight. As the applicant is, as the application is presented, staff will as reasonably as possible try to show the pages of the application that the applicant is addressing in the presentation. Following our normal procedure, the commission members may ask the applicant questions about the application. If the commission determines that the substantial new evidence has been presented by the applicant during the hearing, either during the original or rebuttal testimony, the case will be adjourned and held over to the commission's next announced meeting in order to give the public an opportunity to review and comment on the new evidence. After completing all the hearings on the agenda tonight, the commission may elect to take a short break, which will be announced. After, after the hearing and break, if any, the commission will commence deliberation and voting on the applications, except any application that may have been adjourned to another meeting date. Please note that if your case is approved today, a written decision will be mailed to you within fifteen business days. The decision will inform you of the next steps to complete the approval process. Before we open the first case, please note that we are all volunteers, and I would like to ask each of the commissioners to confirm their attendance for the purpose of a roll call and establish the quorum and for this hearing and introduce themselves and mention the quadrant in which they live. Commissioner?
Brad Flowers, South District.
I'm Harding, East District.
Emmanuel Martin, Southwest.
Milton Picardo, Northeast.
Steve Rebels, East District.
Dave Watson, Southwest. And may we have the first case, please?
Case number one is a zoning map amendment. The file number is M five twenty-one twenty-two. The addresses are two-two-two and two-two-six Merchants Road. It's in the R one low-density residential zoning district. The applicant who's here this evening is Chris Whiteman of Merwin Auto Service, and the request is to amend the zoning map by rezoning the properties at two-two-two and two-two-six Merchants Road from R one low-density residential district to C two community center district to facilitate the enlargement of the existing vehicle repair station, which includes the lot combination of the subject properties with two-eighteen Merchants Road, two, a twenty, twenty-four hundred square foot building addition and the creation of a seventeen-space parking lot. This is an action that requires City Planning Commission recommendation to City Council, and I have here that all present commissioners have visited the site.
And who do we have speaking for the, for the application?
Ron and Chris, you can unmute yourselves.
Hello, how you guys doing? This is Ron and Chris Whiteman.
Yeah, hi.
All right, and what I'll do, I will swear, I will swear you both in.
Thank you, thank you.
Just one second. Here we go. Do you solemnly affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Yes, I do.
All right, and you may proceed, gentlemen.
Well, maybe I'll first.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, so I'm Chris, I'm the father. I'd just like to start by saying, you know, this property has been in my family since the fifties. My grandfather started it. My father, Ron, took it over from my grandfather. I, in turn, took it over from my father. It was originally a mobile station. The tanks were removed at that point. I took it over from my father as just a auto repair shop. It's been in our family, this, my son Ron will be the fourth generation. We've been serving our community, like I say, since the fifties. I think that we're a real integral part of the northeast village. And I think that this project is something that's needed at this point because of our business has, has grown so much with my son Ron coming on with me. So I guess that would be how I'd like to start it, just to give you some history on how long it's been in our family, and I'd like to continue it that way for years to come. And that's, that's how I'll start. And Ron, you want to?
Yeah, so pretty much just going off of my father's, that I've taken it over now. And like he said, we have expanded quite a bit. Our customer base has grown significantly. We've been part of the community forever on servicing vehicles on an honest auto repair basis. And word has definitely got out to the point where two bays just really isn't cutting it, and we don't want to lose customers that have been coming to us for generations of their family and sending them to other people just because we can't accommodate them based on size. So that's really the reason for the rezoning and the expansion.
And we're, you know, this is Chris again, you know, and we've been in good standings with the Neighborhood Association, as well as the neighborhood for as long as I can remember. So I, I think it's something that will definitely improve our community.
All right, anything else, gentlemen?
I think we're open for questions now.
All right, we'll ask, ask for questions. Are there any questions for the applicant?
This is Steve Repolds. You mentioned that it sounds like you have two bays currently. And I understand that we're just talking about the rezoning, but the proposal, it sounds like, is to expand that. What's the planned expansion?
The planned expansion is a twenty-four hundred square foot building, a forty by sixty, in which we will remove one of the current bays in the original shop that is going to become a waiting area, much more convenient for our customers and spacious. And then we're going to move that bay to the back, along with other bays as well.
Yeah, so the total number of bays will be more than two when it's completed? That's the goal?
Correct, yes. We're looking to do five bays in the rear, along with one that will remain in the current buildings. We'll have six total.
Right, with the enhanced waiting area, that sounds.
Correct.
But, okay, that's my question, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Any other questions? Saying none? Thank you, gentlemen. Anna, do we have any ones that would like to? Testimony in, either in favor or in opposition?
Yes, I believe we have three members of the public who signed up to speak.
And I will swear them all in at one time, do we let them speak in order?
I believe our tech crew is just getting them on over from the waiting room.
And while we're waiting, I'll just clarify that if a net, if a person speaking in favor and opposition is part of a neighborhood or community association, they may have up to ten minutes to speak. And if they're a regular citizen, they have three minutes to speak, either in favor or in opposition.
Okay, so we have two Northwind Village Association representatives, Marilyn Schudi and Mary Coffey. So Mary and Marilyn, I'll let you guys figure out who would like to start off the Northwind Village comment, and we'll just start the timer for ten minutes and.
And they need to be sworn first.
If I swear them in. Mary, Marilyn, are you there?
What I'll do is I'll ask to unmute you, and you can just click the button on your screen to mute yourself.
Unmute.
Yep, and then.
Marilyn Schudi.
Okay, thank you. Marilyn and Mary, let me swear you in.
Okay.
All right.
Do you solemnly affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, right.
I do.
I do.
Thank you very much. You may begin.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, well, Mary and I and other board members have met with the applicant probably three, if not four, times. And of course, we understand, you know, what they want to do, and we worked diligently with designing the building with them. First, they wanted to have an extreme contemporary, modern building, which did not fit in with Northwind Village, and they were very, very receptive and went back to the drawing board and came up with our early nineteen hundreds basic design that we've been trying to stick to for a good twenty-five years. And so we've really put a lot of effort into it. And of and beyond all of that, though, we found out after getting the building the way that we thought it should be, then we found out that they were asking for the seventeen parking spaces, which was kind of a surprise. But the bottom line on that is it's next to an open space that we've worked for years on developing into a garden-type of area with trees planted and another foundation planting along a fence line and, you know, lots of grass and open space. So the big thing, and, you know, we've been in communication with Ron, and he promised that he will contact his landscape person, and we will be getting together and, you know, designing the landscape for in front of this parking. Because when you come out of our parking lot, we don't want to be looking at an onslaught of cars because we already have to suffer the intensity of the cars that they have on the Winton roadside. And believe me, I would love to see a beautification along the Winton side, but of course, I guess that's a grandfathered-in situation. But if we can do a really beautiful landscaping in front of where these cars would be, you know, coming out of the parking lot facing on the Merchants roadside. And Ron has definitely said that he will meet, and we will work on this design together. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, should I? Um, first of all, this is an R one property that they want to change, and this is something we really look at very carefully in Northwood Village. It is a property that is right across from a plaza, and it is a property that is behind their business and a vacant lot. So it would not be an eyesore or anything to a R one neighborhood. So therefore, we made an exception to the rule in this one. And the Merwin, first of all, have been wonderful neighbors. And when we first started Northwind Village, and we're having a lot of problems, very few businesses, Merwin stayed as they've always been part of the neighborhood. And we appreciate that, even when the plaza across the street, the drug world decided they were going to come in and set up, sell the drugs, call and pick up. Not only Merwin, but all the merchants and all the citizens met together with Captain Lloyd Kyler. And we all sat down, people got license numbers, and it was goodbye to the drug world in that plaza. And that's shows the great merchants we have, and we respect them, and that we all work together well. So, and Ron said he'd let the ladies work with him on the landscaping, God love them. And Ron, if we could even get some type of landscaping up front, can you do that, like maybe shrubs or something where you just don't see the blacktop? It will be the grandest auto shop in, in New York State. Dress the lady up, if we can have some more up front. They say you can have the ugliest woman in the world, and you put a Chanel dress on her, and she's beautiful.
Mary, are you talking about, Mary, are you, when you say up front, are you talking, we're already planning on the Merchants Road, are you talking about what I was saying about the issue of the Winton Road?
Right, right, right.
You know, the Winton Road is just a disaster.
It would be wonderful, and it would really look nice. And it wouldn't bother, you'd still have your parking spaces in that.
Right, just give a little bit to landscaping, because it's just, it's too bad. And it's right across from the park we've worked on all these twenty-five-plus years with the gazebo park. So, you know, it's just kind of a bad scene to look at all these cars.
And we greatly.
Even if we could have a little bit of a strip and put Arbor Viti to kind of cover it up.
Well, when we come together, I love that.
Let, let's just let the applicants, we'll answer at the end, just sort of procedurally.
No problem.
And.
Okay, fun.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Anna, is there someone else that wants to speak?
Yes, now we have Jim LeBeau. Sorry, I didn't take French in.
That's all right.
You didn't take French?
No, I took your last name.
It is Jim LeBeau, so.
Okay, Jim, Jim, let me swear you in.
Please.
Do you solemnly affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, you may proceed, sir.
I, we live on sixty-five Windermere, right around the corner. We have lived here for a little over twelve years, and we do our servicing of all of our vehicles at Merwin. And I can tell you, not only do they support the community in this neighborhood, but they are very, very nice people. They try to accommodate. I will tell you, every time we've gone by there or gone in for work, there's never any garbage around. I think they do a walk-through every night, from what we've seen, to make sure everybody, even though they're cars, and I understand the lady's concern there, they're all parked straight. It never looks like a junkyard, I'll say that. And the area unfortunately has, is commercial, especially on the west side of Winton Road there. And I agree with them. I think a little landscaping, maybe on Merchants, whatever they could squeeze in on Winton Road would be a plus. But unfortunately, if you look down that whole alleyway now going south, it's pretty much just sidewalk and a few scattered trees. But no one, Ron and his father, I think they will bend over backwards to make this happen. And like I said, I think they're, they're great people. They've done a wonderful job. And I think they, anybody who's invested in our community at this point in time is, should be, should be looked at as a very positive thing.
All right, anything else, Jim?
No, that's it.
All right, thank you, sir.
My pleasure, thank you.
You're welcome. No one else, Anna? Okay, at this time, the applicants have a chance to provide any last information, if you choose.
Well, I'd like to thank both of the ladies, and I'd also like to thank Jim for their input. And we would definitely work with the Neighborhood Association in any way we can. I, I know that, as Jim had said as well, you know, we, we strive to make sure that at night, all the vehicles are parked straight, everything is cleaned up. We pride ourselves on that. If you were to walk into our shop, you would see that as well. I spend more time at the shop than I do at home, and I run a tight ship, and my son does the same.
Yes, thank you guys so much. We really appreciate your input. And I just wanted to add that we've always been part of the community. We've always wanted to be, and we're very pleased to be a part of the community. And a lot of people don't know this, which it's right in our name, actually. Merwin Auto stands for Merchens and Win-Ten. So that's how much we love our community. It's gone through our family for generations now. And we just want to keep it going. We're really pleased to be a part of it. It's been a great part of our success, and we just want to keep it going.
All right, thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
This case is closed. Maybe we have the next case, please?
Case number two, also a zoning map amendment, file number M seven twenty-one twenty-two, address ten to ten point five Jones Ave. It's in the R one. The applicant is Paul Mahoney. The request is to amend the zoning map by rezoning the property at ten to ten point five Jones Ave from R one to C two to facilitate the redevelopment of a multifamily dwelling to a mixed-use building. This is an action requiring City Planning Commission approval or recommendation to City Council, and all present commissioners have visited the site. We have Paul on the line, and I believe some of his. Let's see who else we have here. I think we're still getting other people over.
Okay.
So it'll be Paul, Thomas, and Amanda, once everyone's all the way through.
For the, for the record, when we swear in people, could we, like, have, if it, if it's not really apparent on the labels on the screen, if we could get their full names, that would be helpful, too.
Thank you, Tom.
Thomas Palumbo, Paul Mahoney, and Amanda Feta Place. She's still on her way over. I think Tom will be doing the bulk of the presenting, and the other two are just available for questions if needed.
Okay.
Okay, great, Amanda's here.
All right, Paul, Thomas, and Amanda, I will swear you in, and then I'll let you start your testimony, or your testimony, your presentation. Do you solemnly affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Respond with your name and your response.
Tom Palumbo, I do.
Paul Mahoney, I do.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Tom.
Amanda Feta Place, I do.
Thank you, Amanda. All right, you may proceed.
Great, thanks, folks. Tom Palumbo here from Stantec. I'm representing Paradigm, or actually the owner, fifty-seven Ambrose Street LLC. Also on the line is Paul Mahoney. He's a vice president of Paradigm and a partner at fifty-seven Ambrose Street, which is actually the land, going to be the landowner, or is the landowner. So our proposal is to get a zoning map amendment to modify the zoning from an R one to a C two district. Currently, the building is a, is a legal three, three-unit multifamily building with two units upstairs and one unit downstairs. The proposal is to convert the downstairs to office space and convert the upstairs to a one, a single two-bedroom apartment. There's actually existing tenants that live upstairs that have been using both apartments upstairs. So they're going to remain, they're just, the applicant is just going to renovate that apartment. So it's one, a single two-bedroom apartment for them. Lots of, lots of improvements are planned for the building. You know, the existing character will stay. It's not, we're, you know, the building's going to stay, but new roof, new windows, paint, gutters, driveway is, as you can see, is probably, if you've been there, you can see it's, it's been started, but they're going to redo the driveway, the fence and the landscaping. Inside, again, not wholesale changes to the building, just renovation work, floors and plaster. You know, it's a full older building, older home, you know, all plastered, it needs to be updated. And then the conversion I talked to, so the downstairs is really going to, it's anticipated to occupy, be occupied by three, three people. By Paradigm or its affiliates, they have a number of companies that kind of work underneath the Paradigm umbrella. And Paradigm is an environmental services company. They've been at one seventy-nine Lake Avenue for quite a while. If you could, maybe you could flip over to the aerial map that kind of gives you a good idea of the last one. Number thirteen there. So this gives you a feel for how this, how the property is located. Just to the, just to the right is one seventy-nine Lake Avenue. That, that's the Paradigm main office. And the, the building or the house is actually right tight to the parking lot that's currently existing there. Across, kind of across the diet, the triangle there is fifty-seven sixty-one Ambrose Street. That's another property, that's actually another property owned by the same, same owner. So they, you know, they, they kind of have been reusing, and they've renovated these, these older homes to use as office space. So this is not something new for the neighborhood. They definitely have intended to put, you know, a lot of effort into this, into this building. We do think that, you know, the character, this is going to help maintain the character of the property of the neighborhood. You know, it will, it's currently multifamily. So it's going to remain multifamily, except with the mixed use, is having the office on the first floor. But I think an important part is, is maintain the character of the, of the house and allowing it to get renovated and kind of being brought up to more modern condition. It is a suitable use, we think, because it is, you know, directly adjacent to the existing parking lot. And in Paradigm's office, the occupying, having people occupied in that, you know, the three folks in that first floor will allow them to kind of make, keep, bring their people closer together. So it will help, really helps sustain the business for. We don't see any additional need for infrastructure or any impact on that. So from a high, high view, that's kind of the over, you know, the overview of the proper, of the project. And like to open it up for questions. And like to open it up for questions.
All right. Thank you so much. Any questions for the applicant? Any questions for the applicant? I guess I have one. Will there be a fence that will be separating the property from that would be on the east side of building? If I, if I'm mistaken, I didn't see a fence when I was there on on Saturday. Is there?
On the east side of the building, the parking lot side?
Yeah, parking lot side. I I didn't see a fence.
That that fence was there. It's been removed.
Okay, are you anticipating keeping it removed or putting in a new one?
No, I think they they want to keep it removed. They're going to going to landscape that space between the the built, the house and the parking lot. It was a real jungle back there. So they've since, if you've been there recently, it's it's been, it's been all kind of cleaned out. They've taken all the, all the 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 over story and under story out of there. They kind of opened that up in there.
Okay, and then my second question, with the three units, they were not three units, with the downstairs unit being broken into three pieces or three different users, is that correct?
Well, it's it's three employees. It's all going to be one user. It's going to be one space. Yeah.
And will they be parking behind the building or will they be parking in the lot to the east?
They'll most likely be parking on the lot to the east or they also, so they also own one twenty-six Spencer Street, which is behind fifty fifty-seven Ambrose. So they have a parking lot there with about twenty-six spaces that that can also be parked in. They can, folks can walk across the street.
Okay, yeah, I would just wanted to make sure that the upstairs tenant had adequate parking. And that would be sufficient. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? No other questions? Thank you, sir. Thank you, gentlemen. And ma'am?
Thank you.
Anna, do we have anybody?
No, no one. There's no written comment or there is no members of the public that signed up to speak.
Okay, well, that being said, we will close this case. Thank you, gentlemen. And we will have the next case, please.
Case number three is a zoning map amendment. The file is M six twenty-one twenty-two. The address is three fifty Benton Street. It's in the R one. The applicant is Larry Wong. And the request is to amend the zoning map by rezoning the property at three fifty Benton Street from R one to C one to facilitate the establishment of a twenty space ancillary parking lot, which includes the lot combination of the subject property with ten twelve South Clinton Ave, an action requiring City Planning Commission recommendation to City Council. I have here that all present commissioners have visited the site. And presenting will be Bob Steeler of Labella Associates.
Anna, did we want to also call the other hearing to state that they'll be combined?
Yeah, thank you for that reminder. So the next, I'm just going to state for the record what the next agenda item on. So case number four relates to this zoning map amendment. Case number four is a special permit. The file number is E nine twenty-one twenty-two. The addresses are ten twelve South Clinton Ave and three fifty Benton Street. This is proposed to be entirely in the C one neighborhood center. Same applicant, Larry Wong. And the request in this instance is to establish the twenty space ancillary parking lot. So the one that the zoning map amendment is intended to facilitate. This would be serving properties located at nine eighty-six, nine ninety, nine seventy-eight, nine eighty-two, ten twenty-three, ten thirty-one to ten thirty-five and ten forty-five South Clinton Ave. So an ancillary lot that's principal to these or that's answerable, ancillary to these principal use sites. And this special permit would be requiring City Planning Commission approval. Given that all present commissioners visited the previous case, all present commissioners have visited this site as well. So what we will do, since these two are kind of conjoined, we're going to have one presentation for both and any public testimony would be for both. Any rebuttal would be for both, but then they will be deliberated separately at the deliberations component of this evening.
And then is Mr. Wong, will he be presenting or someone else?
We have Bob Steeler that will be presenting.
Okay.
And he's here whenever you're ready.
Okay, Bob, are you there?
Yes.
All right. All right, let me swear you in. Do you solemnly affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this hearing is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, and give us your full name.
My name is Bob Steeler.
Thank you, Bob. And you may proceed.
My name is Bob Steeler. I'm with Labella Associates. I'm here representing our client Larry Wong, who is the owner of the property at three fifty Benton Street and the adjacent property at ten twelve South Clinton Avenue. So we're proposing a new twenty car parking lot located on on both sites. We're looking to combine the lots and three fifty Benton is currently zoned as R one. So we're looking to rezone it to commercial to match the South Clinton lot and then provide ancillary parking to Larry, Mr. Wong's other adjacent businesses located at ten twenty-three, ten thirty-one, ten thirty-seven and ten forty-five on South Clinton Avenue. So this product was a New York State Superfund cleanup site. It's environmentally hazardous. So there's not much that you can do with a site that can be economically feasible. If you were to construct a house on the site, it would cost more to dig the foundation for the house than the house would be itself having to bring the contaminated materials to a landfill and do sub slab depressurization and those kind of things. So really, it it makes sense for the site to be utilized in some fashion. The proposed parking lot provides a cap for that site. So it essentially closes, you know, the environmental cleanup aspect of it. So we we did a parking analysis of the area. It's it's been a couple of years. This project has been on hold, but it's back now. We did a parking analysis of Mr. Wong's future uses at the properties I mentioned earlier, some of his other sites surrounding the area. And we came up with, the analysis revealed that we need twenty extra spaces beyond what is currently provided at those sites today. So this gives the owner the opportunity to improve the other businesses by, you know, this would be the first step. Having parking for the businesses, the parking lot would serve those four businesses only. It would not be a public lot. And then it it helps relieve parking in the area by taking, you know, the parking off of the street and putting it into the slot for the other businesses. And the planning crew includes appropriate stormwater drainage, landscaping at both frontages on on South Clinton and three fifty Benton. Lighting with houseside shields to protect the neighboring residential properties. The lights will be dark sky compliant and then appropriate board on board wood fencing surrounding the property. To date, we've addressed all the city comments. We are in receipt of comments from the public. I'll mention as part of the design, we do have an entrance and exit coming coming off of three hundred and fifty Benton off of Benton Street and a one way exit onto South Clinton. The area of the property along South Clinton is not large enough to facilitate parking and a two way two way entrance and exit. So if we were to provide a two way entrance exit on South Clinton, we would not have enough parking to meet our parking analysis and the current, which is the zoning requirement. So I I know that that is a concern. The Monroe County DOT has reviewed it and has not found any issues with that. But we're here tonight to get, you know, the board's input and find out how to proceed next. So in summary, we're asking for rezoning of three fifty Benton from R one to C one to facilitate this project and then a special use permit as well. Any questions?
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions for this, for case number three? The map amendment?
I have a question related to the the presentation, which I know kind of spans both cases. This is Steve Revholtz. You mentioned Bob, you mentioned a parking analysis was done that was conducted by Labella? Or are you referring to the parking that's listed in the findings on page two of the findings?
I believe so. So Labella did the parking demand analysis. That's correct.
So it was a parking demand analysis or it was a zoning analysis identifying?
The zoning analysis, the zoning analysis is separate from Labella's. The the parking thing you mentioned in the page two of the site plan review findings is separate from the analysis that Labella's referencing.
Is that analysis in our packet, Anna?
I am not in receipt of that analysis.
Okay, so I didn't see it here. But I did, you did mention that the parking is required. But as I look at the the staff report, this is a preexisting deficiency. So is it correct that this is not a requirement? This is a a request?
Yeah, I I suppose so. So the uses that Mr. Wong is proposing on the adjacent properties are future uses that would require parking for those businesses. And this, I guess, I guess this request at this time would facilitate having the required number of spaces in the future for the future businesses.
But just to to make sure I'm clear, that analysis has not been submitted. And so we don't know what that future, what those future businesses and what the parking for those future businesses would be. And and whether or not the the preexisting deficiencies would still apply to these future businesses, such that they're not requirements.
Yeah, I I again, this project is a few years old and I know it was submitted to the city probably back in two thousand and eighteen. I could certainly submit it again for your review.
Okay, I'm just, one of your statements was that you need this many spaces and and that's why you can't have a two way exit onto South Clinton. But reading the staff report, it looks like there's a preexisting deficiency. So you could, you could have fewer spaces and particularly given that you're talking about future uses that haven't been presented yet. I I just, I guess I could question that statement you made, that you you need all these spaces and therefore you can only have a one way driveway curb cut on South Clinton. So I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, go ahead, Tom.
Anna, can you, if you know, has that analysis been done about whether there would be a mandate for more spaces? Most future uses or that the preexisting would deficiency would cover it?
I would, I don't know what potential future established use permits are underway. If those sites, if the if the site does not have any parking currently, there would likely be a preexisting deficiency, like the parking. It's hard for me to speculate on what the parking requirement would be on for proposed uses in terms of the request at hand today. The applicant submitted a number of properties down in the immediate vicinity, all within one thousand feet of the subject property. And those do also have preexisting deficiencies. However, they did find that they need additional parking to accommodate those tenants, which is why they're trying to provide the actual parking requirement for those uses so they can accommodate those other buildings.
Yeah, this is Steve Revholtz. And I just wanted to understand, was this a requirement? Therefore, we'd have to, if we were going to look for fewer spaces to achieve a two way entrance exit egress onto South Clinton, that we'd be pushing back on on a requirement. But it sounds like we don't know because it hasn't been submitted. These future uses haven't been submitted. And there are preexisting deficiencies. So this is really a request.
Actually, I can answer your question. Yes, if if um, if there were anything less than twenty spaces offered here, the applicant would need to seek an alternative parking plan. So this request hinges on the twenty space number. Otherwise, an alternative parking plan is required.
It's required for the current. So I'm just, I'm wondering what these businesses are.
Yeah.
Where is the analysis that tells me that this is a requirement versus a preexisting deficiency that that already covers this such that it's a?
So I have, I'm looking at the preliminary site plan review here and I see that of these businesses listed that two commercial buildings and three mixed use buildings. Right. Combining those, there's a requirement of twenty-six spaces. They do have six spaces at the principal use sites. Oh, and then they do have that deficiency. So.
Right.
Okay, now I've come back around.
Yeah, so there's a deficiency. It's preexisting. So I'm just trying to understand, is this a requirement that we must somehow find a way to to cram twenty spaces on this lot? Or, you know, is there a way to achieve a two way, you know, vehicular in and out on South Clinton such that we don't have this this deterioration of the residential chara- character? I understand that there's a brownfield that we can't take a basement here on three fifty. So finding some surface use makes sense. But the, but the. So anyway, I I know that we've got to finish the presentation. I was just trying to, trying to establish whether this is the applicant stated this was a requirement, but I just want to be clear that it doesn't appear to be a require a requirement because there's a preexisting deficiency. There are future uses that haven't been presented yet that aren't on the agenda tonight.
You are correct, Steve.
And and there's an analysis that hasn't been submitted.
That's all I.
For this hearing.
Yeah, I'm not, there was not analysis submitted as part of the zoning map amendment application or the site plan or the special permit application.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you, Anna.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for case three?
I guess, do we want to ask the applicant on the record? Should we, maybe we can just, is there, is there anything preventing the applicant? I mean, is your question, Steve, trying to get two way access to to expand this curb cut to provide two way access? Is that your question?
So, I mean, yes, ultimately, from a site plan review standpoint, you know, can we achieve two way access there? But I was really trying to establish the the applicant presented as a statement that that this was a requirement to have this number of spaces and there was no way to achieve two ways and meet the requirement. I wanted to be clear on that because my reading of the staff report showed there was a preexisting deficiency such that it's not a requirement.
Yeah.
Instead, it's a, it's a request, a desire from a parking demand standpoint rather than a a requirement to meet the zoning code.
And I believe at the pre-meeting, somebody had a question about the shared curb cut.
Oh, well, I had a question about in and out access off of Benton. I guess my, my question is, you're you're contemplating wanting to have both an entrance and an exit to the parking on Benton Street. Is that correct, Bob?
That's correct. Yep.
Would you consider having an entrance only on Benton Street and an exit only onto South Clinton? To reduce the amount of potential disruption of that side street, so you have traffic going in one direction and going out another direction. Would that be a consideration?
I I think so. We can, I I did speak to Mr. Wong and his agent today. And they kind of reinforced that we do need to keep the twenty spaces. But I think we can achieve that with a one way entrance off of Benton, if that's what the board will require.
Okay.
And then just so we're all on the same page, the Department of Environmental Services right away office do have standard curb cut sizes depending on whether it be commercial or residential. So the one way, while they might have signage that was directional, the curb cut itself would probably likely be twenty-two feet. Like, I don't, I, it would have to be the standard size for a commercial curb cut, which is likely like between twenty-two, twenty-four feet. But but you could potentially explore one way traffic.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I had. Any other questions?
Yeah, sorry to keep.
So just a follow-up to that, because the curb cut. That's identified on South Clinton is 16 feet, so does that require any kind of? Exception from that reviewing agency? And then as a follow-up to that, as Anna mentioned, it's really a shared curb cut. Is there any kind of easement here? That we're now kind of disrupting? What was a shared curb cut that had a wider? In and out configuration and where you're proposing bollards? But the curb cut itself just still looks like one one curb cut. So it feels. If I were turning in off of Clinton, it would be confusing to me. Right? And hopefully I see that bollard before I hit it with my car. But I've got a single curb cut that then becomes. Bisected by a bunch of bollards. And I don't know if the. If the addition of those bollards and the the fact that we're taking what is a large curb cut and turning it into. A large curb cut that's divided into two with the the north side. Belonging to someone else, if there's any kind of easement or any kind of. Incumbrance that is being disrupted by this proposal. Relative to the sharing of that curb cut.
So we have an instrument survey of the area, and there's not an easement identified on that curb cut. The the bollards were added. And I. I'd have to check my notes. I. I believe we added the bollards a couple of years ago during the initial city review. So I'd have to check and see what the reasoning behind that was. But obviously, the the adjacent property is a different owner. And I think, you know, the 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 point was to get achieve separation between the the two sites. Right now, the. There is parking kind of perpendicular to, or I guess, parallel to South Clinton in the area. And it, you know, simply can't be used within the property alone. Due to the size of the of the, you know, the size of the property. So my guess is that the adjacent property or Salvatores is using that for. You know, five-minute pickups or whatever illegally. And so that might be the reasoning behind having to separate the two properties.
I have a question. Were both parcels part of the brownfield program, or was it just one?
Both parcels, but I believe the brownfield area is limited to the rear. Area behind the the buildings there.
Thank you.
Right? Any other questions for?
Have we get the addresses on it? So it's what, 1012 South?
1012, that's correct, and 350 Benton.
And they're both part of the designated brownfield cleanup site?
That's correct.
All right, any other questions for the applicant? So Anna, do you want to take testimony for for case three, and then we'll do the presentation for case four?
Sure, in terms of the public comment for. Let me get the agenda. In terms of the public comment for case three and four. Seven written letters were received for this, for the. Map amendment and special permit. They were just attached to both of them. The written comment deadline was last Friday, which was December 10th. At 5:00 PM, the deadline to sign up to speak this evening was noon today. No person signed up to speak on this case, so we just have the seven written comment. Which was sent to the planning commission, sent to the applicant, and posted online with the staff report for public view.
Okay, so then we can proceed to the second. Part of the presentation, case four.
Or did you, I think Mr. Skiller may have already covered that in his presentation.
Okay, okay.
Unless you had any, you you're welcome if there was.
No, I just wanted to make sure that we designated that they were basically two different.
Yeah.
Different cases, but deliberation will be separate.
Correct.
Okay, all right, see, no, no other.
Before we close, are there just any, are there any more questions from members of the commission before we close?
Just, I was looking at the instrument survey, and I didn't see the dimension of the. The parking lot to the north, but I'm wondering if by. Inserting these bollards. Even though there's no formal easement, are we, in fact. Impacting. The adjacent lots ability to park and. Hearing that, you know, you need a 22-foot. Curb cut to get in and out. Did we just make them an in-only and no one can ever get out, or an out-only so that no one can ever get in? So I know that.
What pages?
Without a without a formal easement. I'm guessing the neighbor property doesn't have a whole lot to say about it, but it just feels like. We've done, or we're. We're considering something here that has impact, direct impact to another property. Has that property owner been consulted? Have they commented on this? The separation with the bollards and. You know. Basically, with the shared driveway, okay? Sorry, Anna, you were gonna say something?
Oh, no, I'm gonna pull up the survey map. Which is the photo, is that, are you looking at the photo location map? Which page are you on, Steve?
Steve, you're muted.
Oh, never mind, I found it.
I muted. It's an instrument survey that's part of case number four.
Thank you.
It's by triple point surveying.
Okay, so here.
2011. Right, so that that lot number three. Right, I just can't see how wide that is. Is that also 35 feet? Is it 25 feet? Is it 55 feet? Such that if it did have perpendicular parking today, that it no longer has the backup space? And although you're proposing one-way with diagonal for this new property, have we? Does this, in fact, impact the other property? By virtue of taking away the ability to share the pavement? But if there's no. Formal understanding that the pavement shared. I guess that's, it's just a question, that's all.
Are these the bollards?
Those are existing. And, you know, I think the intent of the plan is just to replace those with. Something nicer looking.
That's where they would go, probably, correct?
Correct.
We're talking about photo 12 in the staff report, right?
Which is page 26.
Right.
All right, any other questions? All right, Anna, we all set? We can close these, we can close these two cases. And we will have the next case, please. Thank you, sir.
Case number five is a special permit. The file number is E102122. The address is 36 Council Street. It's in the M1 industrial district, so there is a typo on this staff report. Staff report says R1 low density. That is not true. It is, in fact, in the M1 industrial. Zoning district. The applicant is Jason Randall of Raymar Steel. The request is to establish outdoor storage. At 36 Council Street, which is a special permit use in the industrial district. This outdoor storage would serve the business Raymar Steel, which is a steel manufacturer located at the adjacent parcels of 432 and 464 Portland Ave. And this is an action requiring City Planning Commission approval, and all present commissioners have visited the site.
And who do we have presenting this evening?
Hi, good evening. Are we on?
We can hear you. I hear Betsy and Scott.
Okay, great.
Yeah, Anna, I'm here as well.
Hi, it's Betsy. I'm here with Ed Perone and Scott Fisk. Calling in from Scott Fisk's office. We're pleased to be here.
Okay, before you get started, I need to swear you all in.
Sure.
All right, let me swear you in and then respond by. Give us your response and your full name. That way we know who all is present. Do you solemnly affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Give us your full name, please.
Betsy Brad.
Thank you, Betsy.
Edward Perone. Scott Fisk.
Thank you, Edward, and thank you, Scott. And you may proceed.
Great, thanks. It's nice to see everybody this evening. At least some of the commissioners will remember that we were at the planning commission not too long ago. In connection with the rezoning of this property. It was proposed specifically for the purposes that we are proposing tonight, which is for additional outdoor storage. You may remember that there was an expansion project of Raymar Steel. Oh, maybe not even a year ago, right? This is sort of a phased expansion. They've been growing, doing really well. They're very busy. They produce and process steel for construction. So they deal with very large, large volume and large size. Steel inventory. So the next step in the process is really to expand. They are busting at the seams and very badly need this outdoor storage area. We did submit the site plan for this, having already gone through a site plan on an earlier expansion last year, which did include some outdoor. Storage, we knew what to expect, so we did provide some screening. There is a 10-foot, a relatively attractive 10-foot. Perimeter fence, a picket fence type fence. They have had a history of some security problems with. Break-ins. In here, because I can hear us. Yeah, so they have a history of break-ins and security issues, so the the fence is important and necessary. They are very aware of their surroundings. This hopefully will not be the end of their expansion, but they have been acquiring property, you know, over time. And were able to expand into this area. We'd be happy to go through sort of the. Kind of the the internal layout, if you want to know how the materials get here. Because essentially, they need to store large steel on pallets. Trailers, and I will say for the record, the trailers will not be stacked. They will just be a single, single level. And maybe some low-profile equipment and, you know, other steel inventory. The reason they need this area is because they do steel for construction. They don't have control of when the steel needs to leave the site and go out to the construction site. Oftentimes, they have to hold on to it for a short period of time until they're ready to receive it at the construction site. Sometimes they don't have control over when they receive the materials for processing, and they just don't have space. So we have proposed this. We have seen all the comments, but we have been working with the staff on addressing the comments. So what you, let's see, there were some comments, I think, from the landscape.
Right.
From the landscape consultant. So originally, we were proposing the the perimeter fencing. With landscaping on the inside of the fencing. We were asked to make a modification to the type of landscaping. To reduce the amount of arbor by day and add in some English oak along Council Street to sort of soften that visual impact. So we have done that. We were also asked to move the landscaping to the outside of the fence. And that has been done on Council Street.
Was set, setting the fence back 10 feet. Which is roughly from the back of the sidewalk in the property line to. Afforded a little bit more softer visual impact to the people on the other side of Council Street. Just so, just to alert the board as well, this is a continuation. The outdoor storage, as we explained in the previous application. Is part of the production process. It's part of the flow of steel going in and out of the facility. All of the steel only goes in on the north and out on the north end. There is no access whatsoever on the south end. It's only for vehicular. Automobiles for the workers and any guests that come to the facility. So this area is critical because of the size of the addition and the amount of business that they have. Fortunately, are doing very well right now, and they're supplying steel to. Many, many locations in the Rochester area. They're one of the largest steel fabricators in Rochester area today.
I would add, there's no lighting proposed.
I was just gonna say that, no lighting at all.
And the intent is that this activity, this area would not be, you know, would be limited to daytime hours, you know, the seven to five or six.
That's correct. That's correct. So it would be, if if there is any modifications to noise, it'll only be during the daylight hours and. It's a very, relatively very quiet business as it relates to that, because the product is, is as as Betsy said, is out of. Flatbeds, and it just transported into the building. And when it's ready to be. Carried out to the, to the customers, is they just pick it up? Or hook the trailer up and take the trailer to wherever it has to go.
And just to give you an idea, they they have been super busy. They have invested in staying in the city of Rochester and in staying in this location. They just completed, I think, a $6.5 million expansion.
Yes.
So this is just sort of the next phase in that.
I think.
Do you have any questions for us?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so we'll ask any questions for the applicant?
This is Steve Revholtz. I have a question. Looking at the staff report that I have, it looks like the fencing is shown at the property line. Is there a new landscaping plan that shows the. You know, the landscaping changes you spoke of and the fencing setback changes you just spoke of?
Steve, we will do that. Obviously, we didn't have time to do that, but we will make that modification, Steve. We've talked to staff about it, and it was in on the Zoom call that we had with Marshberry. We will absolutely do that. That's part of the approval process.
Is that setback just along Council Street, or does it also setback along the, there's a house just to the? The west?
Yes.
And if that 10-foot fence is not right on the property line, it's going to be just a few feet from the windows of that house? You're also looking at a setback there?
We can, we can make that modification as well, Steve. I understand what you're saying, and our client recognizes that, and he'd be willing to move that fence back. Okay?
You prefer the landscaping. We prefer, I think, the landscaping maybe on the on the outside, on that side as well, if we move the fence in. So the neighbor has some landscaping as opposed to the fence, and the landscaping have the. I think they'd rather have the green next to their house.
All right, any other questions, Steve? Any other questions? Okay. All right, Anna, do we have any? Comments on this case?
We do not, so. The deadline to provide written comment was last Friday, December 10th at 5:00 PM. There were no written comments for this case, and the deadline to sign up to speak at this evening's public hearing was today at noon, and no one signed up to speak.
Okay, and so the applicant, you have an opportunity, any final comments you'd like to have before we close the case?
No, not at this time.
All right, thank you so much. Then this case is.
Thank you.
This case is closed. Maybe have the next case, please?
Case six, this is a special permit renewal. So the file number is E112122. The address is 444 Thurston Road. The zoning is R1 low-density residential. The applicant is Megan Halper of Home Leasing. The request is to continue a temporary 24-month, 13-space ancillary parking lot to serve the 48-unit apartment building at 447 Thurston Road. This is an action requiring City Planning Commission approval, and all present commissioners have visited the site. Oh, and we have two people abstaining, so actually not all present commissioners have visited the site. So Kim and Steve, I can give, we. I can give you a call when when we've determined what our deliberation start time is, so I'll. I'll shoot a message to you out in space so you know when we're gonna do it. But you can both sign off now, and I'll let you know when we pick up our deliberations.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
And so this means that Commissioner Watson, Commissioner Flower, Commissioner Pichardo, and Commissioner Marlin have all visited the site.
Yes. All right, so we have two people speaking?
I believe maybe just Adam. Adam, is it just you?
Yes, hi, it's just myself. Megan was unable to attend this this evening.
Okay, Adam, I will swear you in. And then we'll let you get started.
Okay, great.
Do you, whoops? Do you solemnly affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And give us your full name, please?
Adam Driscoll.
Thank you, Adam, and you may proceed.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to the City Planning Commission for reviewing our application for renewal. Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say uh thank you to the uh City Planning Commission for um reviewing our application for renewal. Um, it was, uh, obviously, in this, the uh description, it says in two thousand and nineteen um, was approved for a twenty-four-month uh period. Um, unfortunately, our goal was that a uh uh subsidy-only program would have been released by uh New York State for the type of um um development we were looking to do. That did not happen yet. Um, we, we still have hopes that it will. Um, and that's the uh, the reason why we had to uh um apply for the uh extension or for, sorry, the special permit renewal.
All right, anything else?
Um, I don't know if there's any questions for me with regards to the previous application or anything at the moment.
Okay, well, we'll, we can find out if any questions. Uh, any questions for the applicant? Any questions? Adam, I do have one, and I think you alluded to it. Uh, with the new development, uh, I would be making an assumption that because of the lack of the new development coming into fruition, you're contemplating using that property that the current parking lot is on as a new construction or a new facility?
Yes, sir. Yes, that would be our uh proposal. We, we don't have um details on anything related to unit count because we just haven't had the uh, the uh release of the program to see what would be allowed or not. But yes, that would be, that would be the intention, would be a new construction um uh multi-dwelling.
On that side, okay, and then again, that's the temporary nature, gives you the flexibility. Once you get notification, you can apply for all the things that are needed and not have to worry about the parking.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I need to know, right? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, um, this isn't with intention to do and gotcha. That's not, that's not my point here. It's just to give you an opportunity to kind of reflect on the initial uh site plan design that was submitted for approval a couple of years back, that showed some setback and some landscaping, and that is not what ended up happening. Um, so I'm wondering what's going on there and whether you have any feedback for that.
Um, that's a good question that I wish I had a better answer for. Um, but I don't, I think, um may, I, I don't, I don't know necessarily why the uh, the plantings weren't put down, and I can't say for sure that the setback, um, it didn't look like, it looks like it was a five-foot. It didn't look like that was met, and, and I apologize for that. I didn't realize that uh um, coming into tonight.
Got it, and I, I bring it up mostly because there is a fair amount of pushback for parking lots. Um, and, and, and just in general, right, as we see applications come up to this board. Um, and, and so some beautification measures that are taken are taken pretty seriously when we do it. So I just wanted to see if there's any, any other detail around reasons why or if it was just missed. Um, so when we deliberate on it, uh, we can kind of have that in the back of our minds. Thank you.
I, I think, I think you nailed it. I think it got missed.
Um, would it be, or can you tell from what you know, um, would it be a deal killer to to approve it with the, subject to the condition that it abides by the previously approved site plan?
Um, I, I don't see why planting would be an issue. The, the setback could be a, a prob, a, a, a problem if we have to right, if we have to um move the, the asphalt back and remove all the fencing. Um, that would be much.
Anything under five feet doesn't meet the, like, width requirement for a landscape, like, to have the proper planting that's gonna be a sustainable planting. It's not, this isn't providing enough space for healthy root systems or things of that nature.
So Anna, you're saying if, that if there was planning, it would have to have at least five feet, like a
That's the technical, yeah, that's the technical requirement. It's the minimum width for a landscaped area is five feet. Um, and that's just to provide there, and then there are even more technical details of like the, and like the, what type of planting you would put in and like in what state of its life you would put in. I just, I don't know if this would I don't know if this would be conducive to, I, I'm not the landscape architect, but they're just my naked eye, I, I'm concerned about this. It's like a foot or two. I don't know if that's enough room for a planting.
And, and that's a good point, Anna, is that the plantings, hopefully, would end up coming out, you know, sooner than later, because if we can get a project uh approved here, um it would be a it would be something that ends up getting removed, but.
All right, any other comments? Any other concerns? I have, I have one question. Yes. Since um this parking lot is to um uh serve four forty-seven, um, what other type of parking uh is available for four forty-seven?
Um, the only parking available is, is this uh location and obviously on, on all the street-side uh street parking.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, sir. Anna, do we have any comments or any? You're welcome.
The deadline for written comment was Friday, uh, December tenth at five P M. No written comments were received on this case. The deadline to sign up to speak and participate and provide verbal comment at this evening's he, hearing was uh twelve P M today, and no one signed up to speak.
All right, in that case, the, this case is closed, and this hearing is closed. And we need to determine, uh, what I have, I have about quarter after seven.
Kate, I mean, um, Kim said she would prefer a shorter break.
Oh, yeah, oh, shorter rather than fifteen-minute?
Yeah.
Uh, okay.
That's her vote, that's her vote, but there's.
I understand, I understand. Uh, like I said, I have seventeen minutes after. Let's uh rejoin twenty-five after. Is everybody ten minutes?
Okay.
All right, then we send everybody back in about ten minutes. Thank you, Anna.
Yep, and you can end the live stream, tech crew.